Welcome to this meeting of the Milton Planning Board. It's our fifteenth meeting in fiscal year eighteen. So we'll introduce ourselves. I'm Alex Wadside, the chairman.
Denny Swinson, member.
Laura Masser, Assistant Town Planner.
Julia Getman, Clerk.
Cheryl Togias, member.
And Brian Ferris, member.
All right. Now, we're going to meet on the seventh, right? At a joint meeting with the selectmen. And then this says we're meeting on the eighth also. It seems a little stern.
I agree.
So...
That's just my family.
It just that I don't think works very well. But I do know that there are people who want to get stuff done before the 22nd. So...
We do have a scenic roads application that is scheduled for the eighth.
Right. And I think that Ned has 1065 Brushhill Road maybe coming in then. Is that right, Ned?
I think that it's more likely to be following.
The following, the 22nd? Okay. So then we really probably could skip the eighth and go to the 22nd.
We have, there's been a public hearing scheduled for that scenic roads application that requires two weeks' notice.
A public hearing for what?
For the scenic roads application.
Oh, that's the one where we're going to, we're going to have a site walk. This is where they're going to cut through the banking on Harland Street and make a gorge and so that they can have a loop driveway.
Yes.
And I think we're going to have a site walk there, so...
And it's very...
That's all we would, that's all we would do. We wouldn't determine the thing on the, so we'll continue it on that day. We're going to just, we'll, you'll, we'll post it. Continue it until the 22nd. And we will schedule a site walk on that today.
Okay.
So, Alex, my understanding that we're not going to meet on the eighth, then?
I, unless there is a desire to do so, I think that after the seventh, we're probably going to not be very eager to meet on the eighth.
Okay. Thank you.
So we won't. All right. We've got some minutes that are circulating, and we'll talk about them later. And we'll go to Citizens Speak. Mr. Joe Henning, do you want to speak?
Yes, I do.
Well, come up and...
Hi, I'm Phil Joe Henning, 23 Parkwood Drive. I wanted to talk about a Citizens petition that I presented along with neighbors and friends that would ask for a moratorium on zoning exceptions until the town had the opportunity to reevaluate zoning. As our primary zoning ordinance was adopted in 1938, it might be time, eighty years later, to take a comprehensive look at zoning. And that's what we are asking Town Meeting to do, to instruct the Planning Board and any other board that they might appoint to take that comprehensive look. The reasons why I want to, I wanted to do it and why my neighbors and friends wanted to do it is that I think the time dedicated to location-by-location zoning is excessive, and it causes both the Planning Board and Town Meeting to lose excessive amounts of time in evaluating project by project. And I don't think it's the right way to adopt land use policy. So I'm asking that we take a townwide look. The reason, one of the reasons, another reason in addition to excessive time, is that I think it causes discord among neighbors inside the town. And I think that's wrong. I think that when I first moved to Milton, they were discussing the synagogue project. And I know people who still classify others on how they voted with respect to the synagogue. So people don't forget. People who might be close to a project like the synagogue would naturally be opposed. And then everyone else in town, you know, many of them would, would favor the project. And what it causes is tension and discord, as I pointed out. The last thing that I think is a good reason to take a townwide look is that the town doesn't appear to have the resources to enforce the provisions of special permits. I had a ZBA hearing the other night, and the building commissioner came to the meeting and said that even though he just hired a zoning enforcement officer, he does not have the resources to enforce provisions of special permits, which indicates that all of the work and effort that the Planning Board may go to, to set conditions and terms in a special permit, are useless because they're not being enforced. So I think in light of the fact that we have a master plan, which could be a vehicle or an outline or a direction for, for a new zoning ordinance, we ought to take this opportunity now to look at townwide zoning and do a thorough job now in outlining commercial areas, residential areas, zones A, double A, B, C, D. Let's get it right for another eighty years rather than cobbling together exceptions to an eighty-year-old statute. Thank you.
Thanks. I was going to ask you to tell us... Yes, you may. Oh, you're going to be, you're doing a Citizens type of speak. Okay, go ahead.
I'm a citizen.
Why, you are.
Ned Corcoran, 70 Morton Road, Precinct Three, Town Meeting Member. I guess a couple of things. One, I thought I would report in to the Board on the outcome of the zoning Board of Appeals hearing on the 475 Adams Street. It's not on the agenda tonight, but I thought the Board would like to know that the Board of Appeals voted to grant the variances that were requested, specifically appreciated the effort that this Board went into in terms of the site plan review and the recommendations that were made. The letter that Alex drafted at your request is, is being included as an exhibit to the, to the decision. And we do need to come back at some point, probably, think about the 22nd, to talk about finalizing the site plan. I think the decision, Board of Appeals' decision is in for signature and will be subject, posted for the twenty-year appeal, the twenty-day appeal period, probably by Friday. So I think we owe you a final site plan relative to planting plan, I think, material conference. So we probably want to, we'll focus on a date, perhaps the 22nd of February for that purpose. And then second, I'm just, I think I need initially to react to the suggestion that Mr. Joe Henning just made. Being in the land use development process, I don't think my clients necessarily will wait for a moratorium to consider how we would reestablish the zoning in the town. There are state statute authorities available to them to pursue development in ways that don't follow zoning in any effect. And I think that the way we do zoning is the way we do zoning. Is it the best way? I don't know. It's the way we do it. And properties come up for redevelopment when owners and/or developers make decisions to put them forward, and they try to work with neighbors and the boards to come up with the best outcome that they can. But I think it's impossible to specifically define how property would ultimately be used. And that's a process that would take, and we already, we're already well into a process that incorporates the master plan. We're into the master plan implementation, and I think we ought to just follow along with that. So that would be my initial reaction to the suggestion of a moratorium on zoning. Thank you.
Now, we have a continued preliminary subdivision hearing on 1065 Brushhill Road coming up at eight o'clock, but...
I'm expecting that Mr. Galvin will be here at eight o'clock.
Okay.
And we have, I think, a significant amount of progress to report in on and ask for some guidance from the Board, perhaps, on the preparation of a final subdivision plan. We're very close to full agreement among the parties. It may be that between now and eight o'clock, we get to full agreement, but I'd like to, we think we'd both like the opportunity to report to the Board on where things are. And I know I submitted a memo with a draft of a plan that at least depicted what's, what has been considered, so...
All right.
We'll spend ten or fifteen minutes at eight o'clock.
Now...
And I know we have the 324...
What?
324, 328 Brushhill, Adams Streets on the agenda.
Yes.
We probably need to continue that.
Right. You would, you would request additional time and just send us a note saying that you request additional time for us to act on this until February, or February 30th? February 28th?
It'd be a long time.
February 20, either February 22, which would be the...
Well, this is just time, you know, a couple of days at the end of it.
I may just, I may just suggest that we put it over to March 8th.
Okay.
Which I think would be the first regular date.
All right, okay, but just, yeah.
Could you let us know when we can go back up there again, before the meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So...
Yeah, I'll do that.
You'll remind us...
When I, when I know that the, when I, when I understand that the, the restoration to the roadway work has been done, I will then advise the Board, and that's the date that I'll, I'll push for a date that's consistent with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, on the, on the Milton Marketplace hearing, Lauren, scheduled for 8:30, is Mr., the lawyer coming in?
He is coming in.
He's going to come in at 8:30?
Yes.
Okay. So we will now discuss the tree on Beechwood Lane. And as you know, this is a subdivision, and the subdivision had a provision for a beech tree and a maple tree to be preserved. And the beech tree, during that windstorm, a large chunk of it fell out, and the entire tree had to be removed. And there's something, there's a question as to whether or not the tree fell apart because of actions during construction or whether it fell apart because it had a defect that the wind caused, that the wind took advantage of and sheared off enough of the tree so it couldn't be saved. And I don't know what the answer is. And I know that as, in a subdivision, I mean, we made a condition that they take protective measures on the tree, and they may not have taken the protective measures, and no one forced them to do it. And we're not the enforcement authority on these things. The building commissioner is. So it's hard for, we don't have any authority to say, replace the tree, in my view. I mean, we can say it, but I don't think we have the authority to back it up. I mean, changing the subdivision plan, the conditions on the subdivision plan so that the developer has to replace the beech tree, I don't think would be legal at this point. I mean, we don't, we don't know if the developer is responsible. And certainly, no arborist has, the arborists indicate that the tree may have been, have been, the health of the tree may have been impacted, but whether or not that meant that within six months, the tree fell apart, I just, I think that's maybe a stretch. So what do you think?
I've thought all along that I, that we've been in a tough, tough situation of placing blame on, on one party. I agree. I don't know that we have, we don't have the information to determine the cause of death, so to speak. I do think that certainly we could give direction to our building inspectors with a public statement by the Board that we don't believe that the site is any longer in compliance. And maybe that's the best we can do at this point, such that at this point, if they try to add something else up there, or they try to make some other modification, they would have to, they would have to deal with that compliance issue before they could proceed.
Well, the condition, as I, and I'm, unfortunately, I don't have the subdivision decision, but it was basically take measures to protect these trees.
So it wasn't that the tree had to be there? I thought, I thought it said they had to put it back if the tree died, but I don't have it in front of me.
I know, I'm, I'm pretty sure that we, that was a big tree.
That was a big tree, yeah, you're right.
I, I think that we, we, what we said is take steps to make sure that these trees do not get, do not get harmed. And they didn't take adequate steps. And the trees undoubtedly did suffer some harm, but figuring out, with the respect to the beech tree, I, you know, I, I find it hard to believe that the whole tree would fall apart within six months just because they didn't, because the root structure was, was impacted. I just don't, I would need some professional advice to come to that conclusion. And the other tree does need some work, and I think that we should say to the building inspector, we believe that's the developer's responsibility to do it, because I think it is, as I remember the condition. So I, I'm happy to write to the building inspector. I just don't, I personally don't feel that we can say he's got to replace the tree. You had it priced, and it's about $30,000?
Yeah.
For a big tree, but not a, not a...
Still not, the tree is there, right.
Huge tree. So what do other people think?
So what you're proposing would be that we at least suggest to the building inspector that they should take, the developer should take steps to maintain the tree that's still there.
Right.
Right.
That's what I think is about all we can do, but, I mean, we can do anything, but whether or not it's legal or not is another question.
Does, does the building official have to certify that the work is complete and it is satisfactory to the terms of the special permit?
Well, all the houses...
When the final certificate of occupancies are done, or how?
They're occupied.
I know the homes are occupied, but is there a final sign-off on the, on the site work, the road work, the shared work?
Well, the road has, has, is going to be, is, is it a private tree, or is it going to be accepted?
I'm not sure of the details.
I don't remember. Is it, it's...
My recollection, I mean, we've had this on our agenda six or eight times, and the neighbor has generously spent time and energy on this, and I feel as if we're not being, we're kind of just throwing it back and say, thanks for coming and spending months and months trying to address this with us, and we're not going to be able to do anything. And if I were the neighbor, I'd be dissatisfied with that outcome. And so I, my recollection is that the, the roadway had not yet been turned over to the homeowners association, and, which leads me to believe that it's not a complete project yet. So it seems to me the town has some opportunity to get some recourse. I, I don't know the legalities of that, Alex, so I don't...
I, I think that roadway has to be completed. I think it's going to be a public street, and...
So it seems to me at a very minimum, we could ask for additional trees to be planted there. I think that would be the least that we could ask.
Okay, but, but that's not $30,000 worth.
I don't, I'm not saying replace that tree, because I think that's a difficult proposition, but, and having a tree, a large tree transplanted and getting it to survive can be challenging. But I think some kind of recourse of new trees, like if we, one thinks about the LA that goes along the Blue Hills Parkway, I mean, trees die there, and they put new ones in, and they fill in, and I, I would think that there could be something that, you know, could be planted there that...
Where are they going to be planted?
Well, that, I think, would have to be worked out with the developer and the property owners now, the homeowners.
Well, you could certainly, look, if you drive by there now, there's a gaping vista that used to be filled with foliage, and that's on a common area of the property where the original beech tree was. It's on someone's property, it's on someone's property, but the area is deemed common. So while you may not, you could request in good faith, I suppose, that the developer at least replace the tree, and maybe there's a way you can require it, and maybe it's not a $40,000 tree, but maybe it's even a few dogwoods or something in that area to break up the, now the large expanse of completely treeless area, because before you had a lot of foliage in that window. Now you can see straight back into, into Boston.
I mean, I've said this on other, in other projects when we're talking about tree preservation plans, that it's much easier for site contractors not to protect the trees and then beg for forgiveness later. And you can't replace these large trees, as we've talked about. So I, enforcement is critical. I, we've talked about this even with developers who, who make the effort initially, but the site contractors may move things as they get in there. This is really something that if we're going to spend the time and energy, I think as Mr. Joe Henning said...
This is a subdivision, which is controlled by statute. It's not a special permit. It's a subdivision.
Well, I guess my, my larger point is that we spend the energy and the time looking to preserve trees, and we'd like to make sure that that's well-spent time, that it's actually something where it will be monitored, just like any other provision of a special permit or the building code or whatever other regulatory item that is, is in effect for a particular development. So if we just let this, I think, pass, I, I think that that doesn't bode well for...
I think it's fine to require some planting. Where do you want the trees planted?
I would suggest that there be an arborist or a landscape architect or some, an installer or somebody. I'm not that...
And we're going to ask the developer to hire it, or are we going to hire the arborist?
I think it could be worked out between the developer and the, and the neighbors. I mean, there's, there's an obvious space...
Yeah.
...that was intended for a beech, I mean, that's, that's, the problem that I'm having is that this neighborhood was planned around these two Beechwood trees. It's called Beechwood Lane. I mean, the whole, this was like a focal point. So given that the, the Planning Board did say to protect these trees, and I'm pretty convinced that it was, well, we know the developer, he said that he did not take the protective measures, but then, in addition to that, the final proof would be if, if that new homeowner did present those photographs that he said, where he said he had photographs of the dumpsters on top of the tree roots. I mean, that, he said he had it. If that came forward, I would be 1,000% convinced, but I'm, I'm 90% convinced as it is anyway, even without the photographs. And so...
It was an old tree.
It was an old tree.
It was next to a house that had been burned. The tree had certainly not had a luxurious life over the past ten years prior to the development. I would, I would think that asking for a landscaping plan prolongs the pain here, and I, I actually like Denny's suggestion of sort of leaving it to the neighbors and the developer to work out, and we could suggest that the tree be planted in the general vicinity of the original Beechwood. And to be left out, but, you know, to be determined by the property owners of the condo association in that general area, I would be comfortable with that, because again, that was the intention, that there would be foliage and a tree in that area. And if it could be a beech tree, all the better.
And this would be installed prior to the acceptance of the road, then? I'm just asking, back to our, our jurisdiction, to what Alex was saying.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the road isn't going to get completed until they do something about those drains. And we can certainly, I, I mean, I'm happy to write anything you want me to write to the building inspector, who is the enforcement authority. To reopen the subdivision, we can do that and put some sort of a condition on, on it. I, I don't think it'd be a legal condition, but we can do it if people want to do that, if they feel that that's a, a good way of proceeding. I think we should ask town council if he would agree with reopening the subdivision, put a condition on to deal with, deal with the current problem. I mean, I don't, I, I'm open to doing anything that's reasonable and legal.
Do you think it's worth having a conversation with the building commissioner to see what's the, other than, you said fixing drains, is there something else that's holding up the acceptance of the road? Do we have a sense of when that timeline would be?
Well, until they fix the drains, nothing's happening. I mean, the, the development is occupied. Everyone has their certificate of occupancy, and, and if the road doesn't get accepted, it'll continue to be owned by the homeowners association, but the homeowners association, if it's meant to be a public road, probably don't want to own the road.
But is it, I'm confused, is it still the construction site and therefore under the control of the developer, or has it already gone back to...
No, I think it's under the control of the developer.
The way their typical condo docs are typically set up is that the, they probably all have a seat at the table now as homeowners up there, but the developer doesn't get let off the condo association and therefore let off of liability until...
It's done.
He's done.
So he's motivated to be done?
And he's probably, and he may be the only, I don't remember the condo docs, and if we even saw them, to be honest with you, but he's certainly motivated to be done. I think his challenge right now is that fixing the grade, or fixing the catch basin issue is not a minor task. He, he has a challenge ahead of him to do that. One of my concerns as someone that drives that road every single day is that as we don't finish the catch basins, the runoff from that road is, when in a, in a heavy storm, is deteriorating Brushhill Road at this point. So there's a lot of issues with that project right now, and I'm not sure, I do believe we have a bond, so at some point, I think the town can...
Right, but the bond is for completion of the, the road.
Completion of the road, correct. Right, so at some point, we could go in and do the completion work. Right, so at some point we could go in and do the completion work.
So a larger question then comes to how, is it reasonable to issue certificates of occupancy for all of the buildings when the drainage is insufficient? The storm drainage system as installed is insufficient?
Well, our last few, the Pulte special permit addresses that, I believe. You're not allowed to issue the COs on the certain percentage of the last number of homes.
I mean, what's the incentive at this, at this point for them to do that corrective work except the legal challenge by the buyers of the homes?
Right, legal challenge.
It seems like the town's given up its leverage, if you will.
I'm, I'm concerned about future projects like Carberry because we have some incredible trees at Carberry. And so, so-
Well, I, I mean, your special permit, you, you learn from your past mistakes. And you, you, you write it, well, I, you, I don't know if you bond the trees, but you make it very clear that they have to be protected. And, uh, and then the board makes sure that, uh, the provision gets enforced. I mean, we didn't, we didn't pay any attention to whether or not this special permit was being enforced.
Well, that's because it shifts over to enforcement then. So, so maybe that is a discussion we should have with Joe Prondak. So we, we, we give him any protective language. It might be an idea to-
Well, I, I made the same, Joe, have you protected those trees? You know, I, I-
So Lauren, is, uh, you had mentioned that the departments are now working together, right? So is there, are there regular meetings where you or Bill might be in a meeting with Joe and be able to ask about enforcement of special permits?
They're, they have, at this point, been project specific. But we can, moving forward, we can have meetings where we ask about that. That is something, as we mentioned at the last planning board meeting, when I go through the tree management, construction management plans. That's something that I do plan to talk to Joe Prondak about since he does do the enforcement on that. So we can loop in at him into that conversation moving forward.
Okay, great.
So, Alex, I think it would be worthwhile to ask the developer to place a beech, plant a beech tree in the general vicinity in coordination with the condo association, in the vicinity of the original beech tree. In, in, in cor, at the same time that he's doing the re, the, the road work that he needs to do to get his final sign off. And ask Joe Prondak to, uh, to suggest that that would be a, hopefully, a good solution for everybody to move forward. And, and allow him to sign off on the final work rather than try to dig into whether or not this tree was maintained, uh, properly. And go through a long process. Let's just all agree that if the developer plants a tree back in that area again, we've, we've achieved our goals.
All right, except he's going to have to do some work on the other tree, the maple tree.
Well, I agree, that, that's without a doubt, absolutely.
So a reasonably sized-
Yes.
Beech tree. I, I mean, we're going to ask Joe Prondak to do this.
Right.
It doesn't mean that he's necessarily going to do it.
Right.
But, well, this is, uh, and then do the work on the maple tree. And call it a day.
And Joe can certainly, if he's watching, he can certainly suggest that we have-
I don't think he's watching.
I don't either. But you could certainly suggest that there's some photographic suggestions, that there were things placed under this tree and that great care wasn't taken so that-
Right. No, I, I mean, I think that we're agreed that they didn't, they didn't, they didn't respect these trees the way they were ordered to. And I, I think that we'll do this. And see what happens.
Okay.
Okay, now, we're going to discuss revolving funds.
Lauren has a great update for us. I spoke to her before the meeting.
Yes, I have some information I can pass out to you. I did look into several examples from other municipalities that there's a variety of tactics for doing this sort of a revolving fund. You can do it through an overlay district, which is a good idea. There are several towns that have revolving funds that are structured as they're titled mitigation funds. These funds, depending on the municipality, can either be educated by the planning board or by the town engineer. They are, they, again, can be structured differently based on the town. Some towns have done this where they charge a specific set fee per parking space at the development. Some have done it where you charge a dollar amount per square foot of gross floor area. And then some towns have done a percentage of the total cost of development that would then go into this mitigation fund intended to do, you know, public benefit amenities, including transportation, traffic improvements. I did look in specifically, Brian had asked about the towns of Framingham and Natick. Framingham and Natick both have highway overlay districts along Route nine, the Route nine corridor. The difference here is that Framingham, they, they don't have a set fee structure. It's negotiated case by case. And, and the funds that they do get for mitigation do go straight into the general fund, which is, to Brian's point, something that we'd like to avoid because at that point you have to go back to town meeting to get the funds appropriated for the mitigation that you'd like. Natick, I did speak with a planner at Natick and they do have a mitigation fund payment that can be educated by the planning board. So, um, the bottom line for all of these case studies, whether across the board, different tactics to get the desired outcome, is that it does need to be related to the development, whether it's specifically, there's a nexus to the development and its impacts, or whether it's in a district. So that brings up the topic of if you had, for example, the Milton Village, if you had a, an overlay district, that would be, you could, this is something that you could tie to that. And it wouldn't be not necessarily specific to the exact parcel, but it could be related that to that district and that would be a way to, to achieve that desired outcome.
And it's useful because, um, right now, when we want a developer to do traffic studies, we, the developer hires the person. And if the developer puts the same money into a revolving fund and it's used for the same purpose, connected with the project, we, we get to determine who does the work.
Right.
And so that's a, a big advantage.
So, first of all, Lauren, thank you for doing the research because I couldn't get to it. And this is very helpful. I think it shapes what I've been trying to encapsulate. And I, and I think what, what was key for me was hearing about the district piece of it, right? Because I think we were all struggling with how do you have a revolving fund that's not tied to a development? And how do you tie it to the development? But I think tying it to a district identifies one of my biggest concerns, which is the fractional ownership in Milton Village, in East Milton Square. These small, small owner parcels, whatever development, if a development comes forward, that development likely will not have enough economic engine of its own to, to actually facilitate any sort of impactful traffic mitigation on the district. If we are, have a revolving fund, it's into which the planning board can require a contribution over five or 10 projects, there may be an opportunity to actually do something with a real impact for the district. So, um, I think what I would like to ask is with, with all of this in mind, I'd love to come back at the next meeting and sort of reshape a little bit what we were doing here. Because I think, uh-
That's the twenty second.
You got it.
Okay.
I can go by the twenty second.
All right, so we're going to talk revolving funds on the twenty second.
Yes, will that be the public hearing that we have for the zoning articles?
Is that when we're doing them?
That would be an ideal date to target. We'd have enough cushion room before the warrant was closed in the event of a snowstorm.
The twenty, the twenty second, why don't we do it at the beginning of March?
The beginning of March for the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, uh, all right.
Can we just ask one question before he starts drafting? Just from my understanding, do we already have districts in place? Can they be districts or do they have to be overlays? Could it be?
It's the same.
It's the same?
So it could be, that is correct, right?
Correct.
They're applied in both directions, district, business district, for instance, on the zoning.
Right.
Or an overlay district would be the same. There's a way, these towns are applied.
Yes.
But a residence A district, they're bounced all over the place. So I, I wouldn't actually, using the residence A district would not be a, a, a good way of doing it.
I would probably limit it to business districts and overlay districts, I think would be my goal.
All right, well, okay, you need an overlay district to do that.
Yeah, okay, we'll get back to you. Thank you.
All right. Now, on, uh, since Mr. Johanning has stuck around, I think we might briefly, uh, discuss a zoning moratorium. If there's something in there that says zoning, you can't zone and the town meeting passes it, that's fine. But it doesn't mean that someone can't come in with an article to zone. And the town meeting can pass that. And that would, of course, trump the, uh, the moratorium. So the moratorium would not preclude the town meeting from addressing future zoning changes. It would presumably be a, um, statement of expression. And I think the zoning has been scrubbed and polished and is in pretty good shape. Some people may disagree. I don't think it's eighty years old. I think that it's the product of eighty years of work. And I think that the eighty years of work have come up with a pretty good product. That's just my opinion. In any event, I don't think that you can, uh, you can zone out the ability to zone. Because if you can zone it out, you can zone it right back in.
Do we have the language?
Yes.
In front of us?
And there's a sticky note that says, May ATM.
Got it, yeah, okay, thanks.
Has, uh, maybe Lauren could look and see whether such a moratorium has been done anywhere else? I, I'm concerned about the legality of it, actually. But the other thing is I'm concerned about is that if, um, we're going to end up getting citizens petitions and 40B potentially because that will be the avenue that people might be able to move projects forward. My, my feeling is that it would take quite some time to actually do comprehensive new zoning. I, I, as we all know, the Master Plan Implementation Committee has been working in Milton Village for a year and a half. And, uh, and we're not bringing forth anything yet to town meeting, maybe in the fall. And so if we were going to say that it would take two years at least, there's projects that already, um, where zoning has passed and are those projects that, um, now going to just, um, I mean, for example, the Falcones in East Milton Square. So would their only avenue then be, um, maybe a less desirable approach? So that, those are my concerns.
Well, my, my view is that you cannot preclude people from, um, going through the statutory. If you want to get a zoning change, you can't zone against a zoning change. I mean-
I mean, my thought about that in terms of legality was that, I know there's concern in the state about having enough housing and that there's been claims that some towns, you know, zone out any potential change in their town through, through their zoning. And that's why I'm curious whether there's a, it's legal to actually put a moratorium on for the, I guess for the same, it's said in different words, but-
I, I, I suspect it is. But we'll ask town council. Town council will weigh in on it. But we thought that we should, uh-
Yeah, just, just one other thing for town council to weigh in on is, you know, a special permit is still technically by right zoning, right? You can, if you could do something by pet, special permit, it's still a by right use.
If it's in, if it's in the zoning, you can't, you can, you can repeal the provision, but you can't say you can't use the provision.
Right, I mean, exactly. As the planning board, we, I don't, if we, if we say the town can't issue special permits, I'd be concerned that the property owners could actually argue that we're, that that's a taking.
Well, it's, it's a, it's, it, if, if that's what's wanted, you have to repeal the special permit provision. That's, you, you don't just say, you can't issue any special permits. Because if the zoning is there, that's the law.
Well, then that would say that somebody who has a special permit is treating differently than somebody, if they're utilizing the special permit aspect of the zoning code versus any other aspect of it, is singling out a certain kind of zoning, which seems to me that would be a problem.
Well, I don't think, I don't think you can. In any event, there are, you've raised a lot of legal issues. And the town council will be thrilled to get your petition and will give us some, uh, some advice. All right, now, we've got the zoning map. And without Bill here discussing the zoning-
Someone just rang the doorbell. Can you just make sure we don't have it locked up?
Oh, there's somebody. It's the Pattersons.
Make sure they're locked up.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We've got the zoning map, but we don't have Mr. Clark, who is our, our, uh-
I can give a brief explanation.
You can give an explanation, but I, I do think that, um, we want Bill Clark here. And, um, so we're going to have to wait till the twenty second.
Sure, would you like me to explain?
We want your explanation, though.
Sure. So I have larger sizes. There are some spelling errors in the legend that we have to go back to the geographic information systems technician to go for. So I have the original zoning map here. This was hand drawn by Draxman. I have the revised, the latest revision of the zoning map, which was, took the original zoning map and digitized it so that you could have access to it on the computer.
What does that mean?
The simple explanation of digitizing is to take the hand drawn map and essentially, if you imagine a computer mouse to click the lines. So it's, it has a lot of room for error because you're using a computer mouse to try to essentially hand draw this map. So what this latest zoning update would do, it doesn't actually change any of the districts. And before I get into this, this map that you have before you, this just shows all of the districts. This map here, I like to use better because it clarifies a bit. This is state owned land. This is the Blue Hills down here and there's some more state land up here by the Napanza River. The green is not a different zoning district. It just shows that it's state owned land. So it's a bit easier, I think, to understand. So there are no, there's no changes to the zoning districts from the last revision. This simply uses parcel data, which is from, fed from the assessors database. So it's much more, um, exact that all the parcels here are correctly shown in the zoning-
If the assessors have it right.
Correct, correct. So this is just, the, the, the previous map had room for error because of the attempt to reconcile the digital version and the hand drawn map. Whereas this is parcel data.
But it was adopted. The, the digitized map was adopted as the zoning map. And it is the zoning map, whether or not there were errors on it. It, once it was adopted, it became the zoning map.
Yes.
And so if we're going to change it because we're fixing the errors, then we're changing the zoning map. We're not correcting it, we're changing it. Because the zoning map is the zoning map.
Yes. Well-
This is why we want-
This is the end of my brief explanation.
This is why we want Mr. Clark here so we can, we can discuss this with them.
What is the difference between these two?
The difference is that it's the same exact map, but you see here-
One just goes the, the green.
Because in a previous version, it said that there, that this land was not zoned, which was incorrect.
Which, which version was that? The current one?
The one that was submitted to you for, for the warrant closing.
I understand. What does the current map say it is?
The current map says Residence A, which it is still Residence A. This map simply, certainly shows it in a different color. It's state owned land. This, this piece down here is parkland, but this is as well state. So, um, the color difference, I mean, if you look at it this way, one might mistakenly think that this land is all right for development, that it's Residence A and not broken into parcels. But that's not, that's not accurate. So this just shows the difference. It, it's not a separate zoning district.
Which one are we adopting?
That I am not sure yet. But this is what I have for you.
So this is option A and option B, is what you're telling us?
Yes.
Well, we like the option B better because- Well, we like the Option B better, because...
I do, it's colorful, much more colorful, look better on my wall. Did you incorporate the changes already that were submitted by me at the last meeting?
Yes, Bill met with the assessor department and with the geographic information systems technician to incorporate the changes at the last meeting.
I think Alex is right, I think in order for us to really review this before the 22nd, we should all have a copy, and I guess we can get it on the computer, but we should also all have a copy of the zoning map.
Of the current, adopted zoning map.
So that we can eyeball, at least eyeball the lines as well.
Exactly, okay, all right, I think that is, that's good, that's good. We'll get Mr. Clark to give us the word on this. Let's see, I don't think, we're going to ask, you may recall that on our temporary signed time period, the warrant committee last time said, well, we're not going to do anything because we don't have an opinion of town council about this. And so we're going to try and get the warrant committee to ask town council if he's comfortable with the size limit and with the time limit. Now Cheryl, it's five of eight.
You want me to do this in five minutes?
Can you deal with the Master Plan Implementation Committee in five minutes?
I can, you have some handouts, and we don't have to go through them. I'll just point out, we had a meeting where we reviewed these. Lauren's going to make sure that the presentation that Josh provided, the Master Plan Implementation Committee gets on the town website and the Master Plan Committee portion of it. But the significant piece of the waterfront portion of the study is that he compiled the various feedback that we received at the public meeting we had, via emails, via letters, and via the Survey Monkey, did I get that right? And so there's quite a bit of information that was obtained through that process. And he's now going to work on, well, we had four schemes of layouts of the waterfront.
I didn't get a copy of this.
Do I have two?
Is it in this packet, it might be in this packet.
It's at the back of the packet.
Oh, okay.
It's at the back.
All right, okay, I did get a copy of this, continue.
So what he's going to do, we have the Option A, B, C, and D that had been the basis for people to provide their comments. And now he's going to do a fifth scheme, if you will, that takes into account a lot of the feedback that's been received. And we're going to be reviewing that at our next meeting, which is February 12th at 7:00. And we've asked for all of the butters and interested parties, so example, 88 War trustees, the yacht club, the Friends of Milton Crew, the Parks Department, the Historic Commission, et cetera, to attend that meeting, because it's our intent to conclude this portion of the study in terms of MAPC's work. And then what we've talked about is seeking approval from this board and from the Board of Selectmen to use funds that were appropriated for the Master Plan Implementation to further some of the work in regards to traffic, in regards to marine engineering, to really assess whether the dock, how viable it is to location of the dock, and then also for some survey and civil engineering work on the land side, so we can really better determine how much space is available to use. So that's the update on the war.
Okay.
I'm working, am I still on time? And then on the zoning piece, again, taking feedback, there was those visual preference surveys that were a part of the public meeting and a part of the Survey Monkey. And so that's been summarized as well. And then Josh provided an update to what we would do with the zoning. So if a real basic baseline overlay would be just to allow the mixed use, which is not allowed currently, so allowing the residential, the multifamily residential over first floor commercial, taking a look at the parking requirements that would be part of that. And then having some, and that would apply to all the parcels, which is not what's in the zoning, because we talked about that at our meeting, is making sure that, why wouldn't you allow that for every parcel, is to at least have a mixed use option. But then there would be a bonus provision for some size lots that would be capped, so you wouldn't incentivize something to be torn down that's historic. And that portion of it is also outlined in here, so if you take a look at it, there are a few slides that are related to that, and then also this language, which is in this draft. Again, this is a draft that's going to be, he's working on still.
Do we have this draft somewhere?
You should have it, they have the draft?
I don't have that draft.
Okay, all right, so do you have the draft, Lauren? You can circulate it?
I have a copy, yes, we'll circulate it.
Yeah, okay, so our meeting on the 12th, we'll be talking about that update as well. So the idea after that would really be to turn over certain, and part of the feedback, a lot of the feedback had to do with historic character. So Historic Commission is discussing whether pursuing a historic district would make some sense. So that portion of it might be turned over to Historic Commission. The area along the waterfront may be turned over to the Board of Selectmen, and then the zoning would be turned over to us in terms of the further implementation of the work. Can I do five minutes?
Yeah, you did it, well done, okay, shall we approve these minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated January 11th, 2018, as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, let's see what we'll do, because it's eight, oh, there he is. It's 8:00, and it's time for our continued preliminary subdivision hearing on 1065 Brushhill Road.
Did you pick that door?
What's that?
That door prop, or no?
What?
I think it was unlocked, I don't know why.
Is the door unlocked? Why are people ringing the bell?
Does he like your bigger room? spacious?
We had another issue, which we were going to discuss tonight, but we no longer are. So that's why we had this room. It isn't, it's nice, but that's the reason, all right.
Good evening, once again, members of the board, Ned Corcoran here on behalf of Juliet Turner, who is the owner of the property at 1065 Brushhill Road. This is a continued public hearing on application for subdivision approval. And I can report, I know that Robert Galvin is here on behalf of many of Ms. Turner's neighbors. We've been sort of herding cats, if you will, trying to arrive at an outcome, and I think we're all but there. But I think it's important to kind of lay out where we are relative to the plan that I submitted and the memo that I prepared for the board last week. Make sure we understand your comments, because I think we're going to resolve the one remaining issue. And when we do that, we'd like to be ready to file for subdivision approval. I have to say that probably the hero of this project is Jack Grant as the fire chief. I met a couple of times with Chief Grant, and there was a general agreement that we had reached with the neighbors that would say that a two lot subdivision with frontage for the new lot on Upper Road would be appropriate, provided that access to both lots would be from Lower Road, using the existing driveway coming up from the Lower Road. That raised a concern physically for me, because that is a very steep climb up that driveway to the property, which sort of sits on a plateau, and could require significant relocation of a retaining wall to make it possible for fire engines to make that turn comfortably in. The chief took a careful look at it and suggested that, under the fire regulations, that if the new dwelling, a new dwelling on the new lot and the existing dwelling were sprinkled, then that would be adequate, and he wouldn't require improvements to either Upper or Lower Road. That the sprinklers would act such to buy time for the fire department to get to an issue if there were a fire. And so based on that, we then set out to sort of draw the plan more specifically. There actually will be three lots, one a non-buildable lot that is proposed to be sold to the Waynes. The Waynes have made an offer, they are the butters immediately to the east, who front on Brushhill Road. The lot sort of comes up in an L-shaped along Upper Road and then along their rear property line. They've made an offer to purchase property. We've drawn a plan at approximately 13,240 square feet, and subject to our ability to get to closure, I think that we'll reach, we will be in a position to convey that property. So that would be defined as a non-buildable lot. The lot, the new lot would butt that, and would extend from Lower Road through to Upper Road with frontage on Upper Road. We are, the last issue of debate, if you will, is the setback area for a new dwelling, both off of Upper Road and off of the new lot line that would be created for the Waynes if that property were sold. And it's been a moving target for the last couple of days. We'd hope to have that resolved by this evening. We're not quite there, but I think we're close enough that we're ready to at least go forward and lay out the parameters of the rest of the program. So the, there will be a building envelope shown on the final plan where the building would tend to go. It works best if it's set back significantly off of Upper Road and off of the other properties. The property really rises up to the tennis court, it's shown on the plan. The tennis court is actually the highest, I think it's the highest point in the neighborhood. And so logically, a new dwelling wants to settle down away from that, at least the center line of that tennis court as much as possible, and so that it sits down relative to other dwellings in the neighborhood. And so that's the, we're working on that. So the existing dwelling would have frontage, its frontage on Lower Road, does not have 150 feet on Upper Road as the plan is currently drawn. So it would retain frontage on Lower Road. That she, the total of the frontage on Lower Road is actually, Ms. Turner owns to the midpoint of Lower Road for the full length of her property line on Lower Road. So her frontage for the existing dwelling would be maintained on Lower Road. There are several conditions, two imposed by the fire chief. The first is that both dwellings be sprinkled, as I indicated. The second is that she, Ms. Turner, or her successor will install a new water line within Upper Road and connect to the fire hydrant that is at the westerly end of Upper Road, proximate to the Patterson property and to Dennis Cohane's property at 1035 Brushhill Road. If you recall, one condition of Dennis's subdivision approval was that he had to run a new water line from a hydrant at the end of Kinsale Lane and connecting up to the hydrant in Upper Road. Ms. Turner will connect the new line to that and install that new hydrant. That will create a looped water system for that area, which would be a significant benefit to all who get their water off that line. It'd also provide a brand new line and new hydrant, provide improved fire safety. So that is obviously a significant cost, but it's a cost worth absorbing. So those are the three sort of main conditions. The agreement, we think, would provide that the water line could be installed either within the, outside of the paved way for Upper Road, between the edge of the pavement and the tree line, or inside the Turner property with an easement to the town for the purpose of permanently maintaining the water line. Whichever is sort of, which easiest preserves, has least impact on the vegetation that exists along the edges of the road. So presumably, if you're digging new trench, you have the potential impact of tree roots and whatnot. There are several other conditions, as I laid out in the memo. The first is that Ms. Turner or her successor and the owners of the property at 1033, 1057, 1061, and 1067, all of whom have direct access to their properties from Lower Road, will resurface Lower Road. Ms. Turner will pay 50% of that cost, the remaining owners will pay 50% of that cost. And that work will be done no later than June 15th of 2019, presumably at least after all, any of the heavy equipment work will have been, to be involved in the construction of a new dwelling will have been, will have happened. You know, if you think, when is the heavy equipment come in? It comes in at the start with loaders, cement mixers, and the like, when you're digging and pouring foundations and things like that. Most of the other deliveries can be made with lighter equipment, particularly as you get later in the project. She's agreed that she'll repair and replace the storm drain that exists at the bottom of her driveway where it intersects with Lower Road. It's an old drain, it's difficult to maintain. And the appropriate time is to do it when you're resurfacing the road. In any event, you're opening it up, dig it out, create a new storm drain system, and then resurface. Both lots, one and two, will retain the natural vegetation that exists along the frontage of Upper Road to a minimum depth of 20 feet. The existing, item seven in the memo, dealing with the setback from the Upper Road lot line and from the proposed new lot line is still under consideration. It'll be something in the neighborhood of the 75 feet that's identified there. There is an existing septic system, there's the plan on the...
Did you get the memo that Mr. Corcoran's referencing in the prior packet?
Yes.
Okay, last week?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So just want to point out one thing, there is, the Wayne lot sort of will come around the existing barn, up and around and up. There is a septic system that currently serves an apartment in the barn. That will need to be discontinued, and so there's a condition that when a new dwelling is built in ties to either septic or sewer, that this septic will be discontinued, and it will be tied to that new sewer or septic as well. I'm not sure in any event whether that septic is compliant with Title V, so that would be an issue, obviously, for a new buyer to investigate in any event. And then finally, there'll be a clear provision that there'll be no further subdivision of the lots, that this is the only subdivision, there will be a... of the lots, that this is the only subdivision, there'll be a covenant that will run with the land that will provide that there'll be no further subdivision. And so that's the, that's the general overview. I think Mr. Galvin can speak if there are any other issues from, that he's aware from his perspective, but obviously I'd like to open it up to the board for questions or comments. Anything, obviously, specifically that you think we need to make sure we're addressing in the, in the, in the final subdivision plan? I know that we're requesting essentially all, a waiver from almost every standard of the, under the rules and regulations of the planning board for the subdivision of properties because we're not proposing any improvements to either way, but doing so with the clear understanding that it is an, is an acceptable alternative for the fire chief and that it, what it will do is that it will preserve the nature and the ambiance of the area, which is obviously of significant importance to all of the abutters.
All right. Now, I have a question. You talked about a subdivision plan. What we have now is a preliminary subdivision plan. And if there's going to be a definitive subdivision plan, that has to be prepared and we have to advertise the definitive plan. So, that's, I gather, what your, and, and of course, there are a number of requirements.
Right. It'll be a fairly simple plan, won't have too many sheets attached to it, but we understand that. I know that there was, the last time we were here, there was a discussion about whether or not an A and R with conditions and covenants was an appropriate alternative to subdivision. I know that the, that the filing and the approval of a definitive subdivision plan is important to the neighbors, and so I understand that that is a process that we'll have to, we'll have to complete.
Right. And, but I, I mean, as you know, you can always change a definitive subdivision plan, and so it's important that there be a backup covenant to make sure that all the conditions are in fact set in stone.
We anticipate, I think, that the, that the agreement that is being drafted and will be signed by the parties would be an agreement that would be recordable with, with the appropriate covenants.
Well, it's, it's, I, I, you know, I can, I can, I think that there's enough here so that it can, it's, it's fully justifiable.
I mean, my feeling is this is what we've talked about, an outcome that we had hoped could be arrived at by encouraging the parties to work together. So I encourage that. It seems like the neighbors are in agreement with this, and it does preserve the character while allowing for public safety. So I, while I comment on how many times we waive requirements, it, it does seem as if it's, it's an important thing here, that these requirements be waived.
I'm going to be a harder sell. Could be, this doesn't have to be unanimous vote, so I think that's probably okay, but I, there's just too many waivers for me, and the biggest one for me is, is the whip. I can't get my arms around an 11-foot road. It just, I think this is a way. I was ready to vote for it as a way on an A and R application. I thought it was sufficient at the time. I still think it's sufficient. I'll listen to your application, but I, I'm, I'm a, you have a lot of convincing to do with me.
I just have a question. If you were to do an A and R and you were to do these side agreements that would be processed at the same time as the A and R, would that save us the step of having to go through every requirement of a subdivision to ensure that it's in the public interest to waive it? Because I remember there were 20 to 26 of them, but I'm just.
It would certainly, it would certainly be a simpler process. I think the issue in particular for the neighborhood is the enforceability, is the town's ability to enforce, rather than private ability to enforce, which they would have under any circumstance, but I think they want the extra imprimatur of the town, so that gives the town the ability to enforce if there were a failure of a covenant. But I agree, and I'm ambivalent on the, on this approach because I think that A and R plan with appropriate sets of conditions is, is appropriate, but I, you know, I'm willing to concede that that's not good enough for the neighbors and whatever it takes to get to the outcome that works is appropriate here.
Well, you should try one last time with the neighbors to say it, it doesn't make any sense to require a subdivision plan when you can do exactly the same thing with a much simpler procedure and get Brian's vote to boot. I just don't get it. But I, I'm prepared to, I'm prepared to go with the subdivision plan, but I just don't understand. Okay. Why don't we, people come up and they can, this is a hearing on a preliminary subdivision plan, so come on up and, and be heard.
Steve Paxia, 1027 Brush Hill Road. I think our big concern is, and actually some of it from coming to some of your other meetings, is the "or else" factor. You know, we're all afraid that someday we could come home from work and have that whole 20-foot section, some, somebody with a bulldozer come take all that out, and that's not replaceable. So I'm curious to, as to what can be done to make that very costly.
Could you talk, what 20-foot section, just so I.
They have agreed to not touching 20 feet of the vegetation from Upper Road.
Not on Brush Hill. So it's not protected by the city road?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I was curious.
And there are, Christine is quite knowledgeable, she's on the tree committee, and she can tell you there's some very, very, you know, valuable, very old trees there, that if somebody were to come in with a bulldozer and take them, they're irreplaceable. And so if there's no penalty, explicit penalty for that, and somebody goes wild with their bulldozer, I mean, this, this could be a big problem.
What's the explicit penalty?
That's what I'm asking.
Well, I, what you do is if you have an agreement, you've then got, you've got to resort to law. If you've got a subdivision plan, I don't know what the subdivision plan would, would say you can't touch the street without the, the private way, without.
I'm, I'm asking for your expertise. I'm not proposing. I'm just saying, I think our neighbors, their nightmare scenario is that, that this very, you know, this very nice set of natural vegetation that's been there for years is somehow, as you've pointed out in some of the other meetings we've been to, you know, you go driving by and trees that you didn't approve to be taken down are gone, and once they're gone, they're gone.
Right.
And so, that's all.
You've seen, you've seen how good we are about.
It sounds like a legal agreement to me is a better stick, though. A legal agreement between owners who are, I assume, under some sort of condo document, a roadway reciprocal operating agreement anyway.
If all the, all the owners of the road agree about what can be done with the road. I mean, you, you've got it.
It's the vegetation of, Ms. Turner is most likely going to sell this to somebody who's going to be a developer, who isn't a party of this agreement, and I'm just asking what, I'm asking your expertise, you don't have to answer now, is what can be done to make sure that if somebody does violate that agreement, that it's a very costly.
You can have a penalty clause in the agreement.
Good idea. In a legal agreement that runs with the land.
Yeah.
The challenge with the subdivision, if, if, if this property is sold, nothing prevents another developer from coming back and filing a new subdivision plan, which widens the road to 20 feet. So, a legal agreement that runs with the land that says you can't do that seems like a much stronger.
I defer. All I'm saying is, I'm just raising the popular question that our neighbors.
You're going to have to have the legal agreement if you want to be protected, whatever the procedure is.
I just have a question, though. Under the subdivision, if they're not following the approved subdivision plan, can't the building official order a stop work?
The trees are already gone.
No, but if they get two trees down, it prevents 10 from coming down.
Look, here, they don't have to do anything, so they build a house, they get a building permit, and then they cut down the trees. Then what? I mean, what does the building inspector do?
So can you have belt and suspenders, subdivision and legal agreement?
Well, I, I just don't see where the subdivision plan gets your butt. Enlighten us.
I don't want to dwell on this because we've already passed this.
I understand you have.
I wasn't well acquainted with Ned. We've had matters in the past, but we've become very well acquainted. We talk weekly, daily, multiple times per day. There's a lot of people here that are involved in the success of this agreement, and all of us on both sides, or all sides, depending how you look at it, we're looking to preserve that rural character of the area, which is special to all of them. And we, we really did think that the subdivision process was appropriate. We've made, you've heard the, the long chronology through Ned about the dealings with the fire chief, all of which we will use to support, as a neighborhood, Julia Turner's request for a subdivision approval. We think that we will be able to provide you additional evidence to that which Ned provides that justify the waivers that would be sought. So Ned, I'm not going to restate anything. Ned has accurately restated our agreement. We're literally just trying to negotiate a building envelope that everybody would live. That has nothing to do with the.
We just wanted to make one last, one last effort.
We appreciate it, but you know, the, right from the get-go, you, you told us to try to work together, and there's a lot of competing interests, and it's hard to keep everybody together, and we've done that, and we will finish this last.
All right. Get your plans in, and as you know, it requires two weeks advertising, and it requires a plan.
Right.
And you're going to have, it's going to cost you some dough. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Who else wants to be heard on, on this preliminary subdivision plan hearing? Because I think we can close the hearing and determine that the matter of the preliminary plan is moot.
So moot.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So you've got a, you've got a tabula rasa. We'll await, we'll await your.
Thank you.
333 Brush Hill Road. Is Fred still around?
Yes, I sent him in the hallway.
All right.
He's returning now.
All right. Now, we have, where did Mr. Clark do? He came walking in here and then he left.
He went down the hall.
All right. All right. We're going to probably bring the, we're going to want the two engineers, so we give them each their own table.
Sure.
Because we've got an extra, we've got an extra microphone. So pull that table over and put a microphone on each one of them and put an engineer at each table.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
David, why don't you introduce yourself and, and say who you are and, and tell us what happened on the 23rd.
Good evening. Thank you for being at 8:15. I was in Holbrook at 7 o'clock, so the timing was perfect. Dave Crispin with the BSC Group. I'm a civil engineer and a land surveyor. Been engaged by the planning board to review and comment and, I guess, advise solutions on this. Was sitting in my office yesterday afternoon contemplating this meeting, looking at the radar, which I tend to do when it rains. I said, you know what? This is a great day to go look at this site. Is Mr. Clark here?
Where is Mr. Clark? Okay, Bill, come up to the table, please.
Who's got the controller?
Are you going to sit next to me?
Lauren, do you have the controller?
We want you to have a microphone.
Oh, I just want to know who's controlling the slides.
I am.
Oh, you got the slides. All right, so let me, let me walk through this here. Except I got a dead battery, that's not going to work.
Would you like me to advance?
Why don't you advance for one second here? Let's keep going. Are we at the end?
Yeah, that's the end.
Go back to the very beginning. Should be, there's only three of them?
I have four.
Four.
Oh, there should be, should be, is there another presentation on, on the discs? Should be about 12 slides.
The picture?
Yes.
Do you have a video?
I do. Sorry about that. Thought I had said this, but.
Thank you.
Hope you get the right one here. It is a powerful gun, though.
This one?
Actually, 24 is it? Yes, 24 maybe or so. It's supposed to be, it's supposed to keep that land. There we go. So I was sitting at my desk, looking at the radar, and wow, there's some heavy rain coming. It's a good time to go see the site. This particular slide, you are right about there, is Milton, was at 2 o'clock, right after we left yesterday, and what this is telling us, we had about an inch of rain. It's a good storm, but it's not an intense storm. The 100-year level is about seven inches, so this was intense, but nowhere near what it's being designed for. Want to click on to the next one? This is the outfall to the recharge system, which is buried up in here, and you can see breakout, not coming out of the pipe, coming out of the ground here, so that the crushed stone is leaking through and there's a frothing flow going down. With an inch of rain, I was surprised to see that. By the time, by the time we had left, go back one, when we got there, there was no water coming out of the pipe. When we left, the water was actually coming out of the pipe. What that tells me is the entire recharge system is full of water, and there's a reason for that, and it's not rain. Let's go to the next one for a second. Took a walk around the site. This is the end of the cul-de-sac coming in this area, and right along, there's a fence here, the ditch coming all the way along his property, it's coming under the fence, going. It's coming under the fence, going through here, down to the back, Luke snaking around, going down the driveway and down to the back. So, that's one point that needs to be addressed. The original idea was this would just go down into the cul-de-sac and into the drains, but the retaining wall in this location wasn't part of the plan. They built it a little bigger. So, I've got some ideas on how that can be addressed, but it's not, it's an idea. Let him do the final design on it.
Quick question, what's the white structure in that photograph?
This is off the property.
Okay.
That garage is probably right here, and forgive me, I don't know the name of the street, but there's a dead-end street right here, and there's a garage and a house. So, we're looking at, I believe it's a garage. But you can see...
A decent parcel.
All the way along this fence, off property, he's created a ditch that dumps everything onto the property.
Where does the water come from?
All of the uphill area down here, and possibly from the street. I should have driven over on the dead-end street and looked. I didn't. Topographical, from your GIS information, it looks like the street may come down and flow this way.
I think that's Beacon Street.
So, is this in response to the new development on 333, or is this something unrelated?
I think that's existed for a while.
So, that's existed for a while. So, he probably did that to, so it wouldn't come into his structures.
You think so?
I think that there's a large pavement, Fred Geisel, for Civil Environmental Consultants. There's a large paving area near the garage and stuff, and there's definitely some runoff coming from that area, and maybe some off the street also, going in.
So, that's one area that needs attention. I think we both agree on that. Next slide. This is that same area. You can see the water, not so too well in this with the lights on, but it's coming down, coming around the wall, going across the front of the lot and down the driveway. I'm sure the recharge system for the roof and driveway was not sized to take that area, so it needs to get out of there. The other interesting thing is, in front of the house here, was a patch of ice, which, if I was to make an educated guess on it, is groundwater breaking out of the surface and freezing as it comes out of the ground. You'll see this problem again, but I did notice it in this location as well. I think we have some veins of groundwater moving through the site. Let's go to the next one. Yeah, you can see the ice. That's that same location, the ice just bleeding out of, water bleeding out and freezing.
Can you tell us what that means? Because I don't think...
To me, it means the groundwater in the area is shallow. At least certain times of the year, perhaps in the summertime it drops, I'm sure it does, but in this February, March, April timeframe, there's the peak groundwater levels. Because we had cold weather and the groundwater was still bleeding out, it was freezing, and the next couple of pictures, you're going to see a much bigger problem.
In the, I know there weren't very many borings. You had in your report the last time, there weren't very many borings taken prior to construction?
Not in the area of the recharge system.
Okay.
Which, hopefully, we have some ideas on how to solve this thing. So, let's...
So, you wouldn't have identified in those borings that the water table was high?
Well, this is the exact question. There was one test pit at the corner of the system, and there was another one over here. You weren't present at the perk test, were you? Or were you...
No, I wasn't. And there's a third one there, just inside, you know?
Up there?
There's one up there, and there's one in between. There's one right at the corner of the system, and there's one right there, one there. So, there's like four in this general area here.
And can you point on there where the photograph of the ice was?
That was way over here.
So, there were no borings anywhere close to that?
No, and frankly, it's not a real concern. I just pointed out that it shows the variability of the geologic conditions on the site.
One thing that could also happen, David, might interject, that when you're changing the grade, if you're cutting into a hillside to build a house and cut a grave, cut a driveway in, and you've got a, let's say, you cut into the earth, moving the soil, while you're kind of intercepting the groundwater, if the groundwater is falling to sloped land and you dig something out, then you can intercept the groundwater and cause the situation we saw in the photographs.
The reason I asked if you were there when they did the perk test, this test pit here, the percolation test, was discontinued, and the note was, surface water entering, entering, I don't know whether that was groundwater coming in through that top surface or what it was, but it, kind of indicative again of how variable the site conditions are out there. Next. Again, this doesn't show up too well, but this is the recharge system, and there is an ice field over the top of the recharge system. This is where they cut the hillside down. You can see the water bleeding out. You can see what was moving down as the ice was warm enough to melt through the ice and where it fanned out. We treacherously trekked across this yesterday like a pair of ice skaters, but when it gets to the downstream end, this is the...
Level spreader.
Level spreader, thank you. So, it's coming over the site, and it's going into the level spreader is what's happening. I think that's something that needs to be addressed as well as we move forward. But because this groundwater is coming down, the leaching system is full of water to start with. Contract...
It has a lot of water in it.
Well, the fact it was leaking out, I think it's pretty full.
We had had, we had had a fair amount of rain before that, starting around late morning.
Perhaps three quarters of an inch or so. I mean, it was, again, it was a significant storm, but it wasn't a 10-year storm, it wasn't even a 1-year storm. That happens all the time. So, next, I guess. This is looking from the cul-de-sac back down. We actually followed the water from the top of the hill all the way down. It goes down behind the wall, kind of soaks into the ground and bleeds out on the other side. This may not be a real bad thing, because it does recharge some of it, but I think this, this needs to be controlled, and we were talking out in the hall about, and we'll get to this later, maybe doing something in this area. So, let's slide on to the next one. I just want you to get a sense of, really, how wet the site really is. I walked down in the bottom in here, and in the rain, there was a quarter of inch probably of water on the ground everywhere you stood, some spots deeper. So, it's, it's wet. I think it's been wet almost from the beginning at certain times of the year. So, some concept ideas, and I throw these out as concepts, because I'm not the design engineer, but you folks asked for some suggestions. Number one, there was a basin proposed in this area. I think that should be built, and whether it's there or over here, really doesn't matter to me hydrologically, as long as the numbers work. But I think the purpose of this basin was to catch water, slow it down, and get it down and into the system. Whether it slows it down here before it gets in, really doesn't matter. Number two, right here in front of the house, the grade currently is quite low, which means where the catch basins are covered with filter fabric, it overflows, and it's going right down here. I'm going to take these out of order. Number three, there's a little garage right here with a catch basin. There's a pretty good flow coming all the way down here. And this is a bit of a regional solution, perhaps, to help, but I could see some rain garden-type cascading pools down there to slow things down and recharge things a little bit more before it gets down. This is where that fence was with the swale. I don't know if it wants a rain garden off the property, or just a catch basin to bring it down in, but it's got to be controlled here somewhere to stop this condition from happening.
Could I interrupt you?
Sure.
Because that is one of the sources of, that was the original source of the complaint, is that neighbor.
Over here?
That, no.
No, down.
Down here, yeah. I can understand that.
So, I think, I noticed, I note that there's nothing down in that direction. So, is that sufficient to stop whatever's happening there?
I would expect that if we can, the watershed that's getting to this point is a big chunk of land up here that's coming down and being directed here. If we can cut all of that off, the only area that's draining to the back corner is that, and the roof and the driveway will go in the recharge system. I think that a catch basin here to catch, catch basin or swale or something would solve most of that problem.
Thank you.
Just because I'm going by numbers. Okay, so we got all this ice here, and we talked at the field, coincidentally, we met yesterday at the field, and you must have looked at the same radar as I did, because we all kind of pulled in at the same time.
Larry called me, I was in Gloucester, and he called me and said, "It's raining here. You want to come down?" We previously arranged to go down and meet together on the site. I said, "Well, it's only sprinkling here." But by the time I got in my car and got on the road, and got a little ways down the road, it was like a downpour. It was like a thunderstorm. It was, almost had to pull over, so bad.
So, we were talking about, okay, how do we keep this groundwater from filling up the recharge system? The suggestion was what's called an interceptor drain, and I have a picture of this a little bit later, but it basically collects the groundwater and diverts it around the system. I'll show you how that works in a minute. If that is successful, then this will be dry at the start of a storm instead of full water. You can't put any more water in a full bathtub, so we've got to drain it down.
Question, so what do you believe is the source of that water, filling that up before rain?
It's coming all the way down the hill. Did I hit you with that laser? I don't, I don't want to get you.
You don't think it's...
In my initial report, there's a watershed that comes way, way up here, you know, at the top of the hill that comes down here. That groundwater is moving all the way down through there, and by hit or miss, the test pits had no groundwater here. I can tell you the test pits in, what was the name of the plan?
Conoco.
The Conoco plan had test pits here with no water. Guess what? There's water here, and I think you saw my report, said there's a puddle here. The contractor said that's been there since the first day he's got there. So, something different happens in the middle here.
But we have a lot of, if we look at the Conoco plan, they're showing where roof runoff and runoff from some of the street areas and pavement areas is being picked up and discharged downhill, you know, whether pipes that are buried or going to the ground.
At the corner of this driveway, there's, I believe, a catch basin. It was underwater, I couldn't see it, but I was told there's a catch basin with a pipe. Nobody knows where that pipe goes. This corner down here goes out and off to Brush Hill Road, so we at least know that this part of the site is going away. But I think if there was an interceptor here, and I've done this on septic systems, not so much for stormwater, but for septic systems, lower the water table by four or five feet, enough to drain the recharge system so it's empty at the start of a storm, I think will go a long way. What we've got to be careful of is when we discharge it down here, that it is spread out enough, and I think we'll find it'll be a slower, more steady flow than we see in a bad storm. Number six, there's room for some rain gardens again around here, if they're needed. Because there is a breakout, that was that picture that I first showed you coming out here, might want to think about an impervious barrier on the downstream side, which is just a trench filled with clay, or a trench with a plastic liner in it, or something to prevent that breakout in the event that it's full. Not sure that's absolutely required, but these are suggestions. We were looking at this in front of the, you called it a mansion, I guess. There's quite a bit of flow. Maybe there's room for some rain gardens down in here to slow things down. So, there's seven or eight different ideas out there. I think they need to be studied, modeled, and see what works hydrologically. And the goal is not to stop all runoff from coming off the site, but to make it so that it's no more intense than it has been historically.
So, when you say study, what do you think is involved in that? Do you have to take, do test pits or other calculations?
It's calculations primarily. HydroCAD is the model.
Do some surveying, check elevations and see what's coming out, so we can determine, you know, what the perimeter's up to pipe in, et cetera, and how we can direct the water on the far end. Where to direct it to, see where it's going. We saw where it's going yesterday, but then take some elevations and see exactly what we need to do.
So, that's more survey information?
Well, some survey information to check elevations, and then going out and coming up with a plan with more concrete and detailed information.
So, you would, in your model, you would plug in some of these ideas and see how it worked?
Right.
But do you have to include, then, how do you, you must have to include a much larger area off, even off the property, if you have to deal with the water coming in off of that neighbor's property?
Well, what we have to do is at least estimate what the areas, if we can look at a map and see what the impervious areas are, and make an estimate in terms of how much water would be coming off of that site, and also we can then model it, we can then put it into HydroCAD computer program and model what's coming off the site.
So, I think what you said before was that you, in your modeling, you had not factored in the things that are over on that left side of that map in terms of area.
Actually, we had.
Oh, you had, okay.
We had included a lot of that area.
Okay.
But right now, our intention was that let it come down into the edge of the, right now, the catch basin is at the top of the hill, you know, they use, we'll get it bottom of the hill, partly down the hill, and we tended to be able to direct flow from the hills coming down there now into the basins and take them down to the system to be infiltrated.
So, I'm sorry, just might ask again, you had, when we've talked about whether the system is sized adequately, you said you wouldn't be able to know that yet until you did some further research, right, or you got some further information?
The study that we did, which was based on the best we could pull together, indicated that this system should contain everything up to about a 70-year storm.
Okay.
Once you get to the 100-year storm, there's a catch basin right about there. I believe that this catch basin, because it's only an eight-inch pipe and it's got about a four-acre watershed, will actually overflow and come down here and add to the problem. That's something we've talked about, needs a little more survey detail. Standing there yesterday, looking at the water level, it's pretty level. There was a puddle a good ways up, even though the catch basin was still taking it, it just wasn't a seven-inch rainstorm, it was a one-inch rainstorm. I think in that bad situation, it's a problem. And that's what the system should probably be designed for in this condition. Let's skip to the next one there, because I think there's a couple of details. I'm sorry this is so dark, but this is an interceptor trench, so if this leaching trench system is here right now, the actual groundwater is coming down the hillside, and I believe filling the chamber up with water here. If there was a crushed stone trench with a perforated pipe, you'd find the water table would probably drop down like this and go underneath and keep this from being full of water before the storm started, because the primary function of this, the soils are not highly percable. It's primarily a retention system that holds it back. Next one, oops, where did you go? This was just one, this was just one other idea, and I, my handwriting is terrible, like third grade penmanship was bad, but cross-section wise, these existing chambers are here, and it overflows into the pipe that's crushed on, and it's supposed to level out here. This going through the soil is breaking out. I think the fact that the runoff is coming down here and getting in here is going to cause a siltation problem with time. So, I think what's going to have to happen is some kind of a catch basin structure, mound this up a little bit so that the runoff that comes across the field can go in, get in the chamber, and then bubble over, it needs to, without having the surface water go in here, because that's kind of a long-term erosion situation. You don't want your level spreader to be collecting runoff. You want it to be overflowing. And I think that's it, and I apologize for my hand scratchings, but it was rather hastily prepared.
Well, I think that's, gives a lot of information. What do you think, Fred? What's the...
We talked in the field, talked about a lot of things in terms of, you know, some of the ideas, and I agree, we should, we need to get rid of the groundwater basically bringing around our system. Our system's designed for stormwater, not for groundwater, and not to intercept other stormwater runoff that gets into the ground uphill from there. We need to intercept that. And the thing about groundwater is it's, it's pretty steady. It may increase in terms of level, but it's not, it's not increasing a lot in volume, so increases, so if you intercept and bring it around every day, it's always running it around. It's like you put a drain system around your house, you know, a French drain, you may be familiar with, you put it around the house foundation so the water gets away, but it doesn't, it's not full pipe. It's just, you know, it may be a six-inch pipe, an eight-inch pipe go around the system, and that may carry a lot of flow, but it's a steady lower level of flow that's coming through, I think that'll do a lot. And if we could intercept the flow at the other end, you know, and that's what our intention was, to intercept that flow, but with the wall now, it kind of diverts it around both sides a little bit. but with the wall now, it kind of diverse it around both sides, the wall, retaining wall at the end of the road. I think, I think there's some straightforward solutions, and I think if we can, you know, that some of the runoff from other sites can be contained, controlled a little bit better. I think we'll have a solution.
Basins?
Well, it'd be basins like rain gardens and basins, or, you know, a swale, grass swale, you know, in a fairly, not steep slope, but a fairly shallow-stalked area, was a grass swale and stone underneath and let the water percolate into the ground instead of, you know, digging a trench, you know, running it off. This takes the water away, you know. And the longer swale, the longer grass swale you can create, the more water you're going to get into the ground.
So, you think that we've got, there are a lot of ideas that will address the problem?
I think there are a lot, yes.
And you think you can, you can reduce these to a plan?
I think we can, yes. A plan that I can get to David and to others that may have an interest in this and to review.
Right, because once we have it, we're going to want to get it built, obviously, because we want to, our goal here is to get this project finished. And this is an important part of it. So, what does the board have to say?
Just to be clear, by the way, I'm not saying all of those ideas need to be used, but-
Well, once he, once he comes up with whatever ideas.
Yep.
Once there's a plan, we're going to want you to take a look and give it up, the peer review it deserves. And when you're in agreement, then we're going to want our contractor to get to work. And install it. So.
Well, I would just like to say, I think this is really useful and helpful information after all of our discussions. It identifies really what's happening. And that's the biggest part of getting some solution. So, the next step will be, once the solutions are agreed upon, as you said, is getting them implemented. So, I'm hopeful that the developer understands that our expectation is that there will be some implementation required.
Well, it may be that, David, is there a certain amount of plumbing off-site, which, I mean, which is part of the condo association, but not this particular, the, this particular sub-development? In other words, there's a pipe going off to Brush Hill Road, which is, was installed in the original development, I assume?
I presume so, it looks like it's been there for a while.
I know the system quite well.
Right, so that, I mean, is there much of that infrastructure? Does any of the uphill stuff have to be addressed?
It's going to depend on what his calculations show, but I can tell you hydrologically, if you can trap water as it comes down the site before it gets to the site, it slows things down and makes it better. Is it absolutely going to be required to make those numbers work? I don't know without crunching the numbers.
Right, but the numbers are going to get crunched, Fred?
Yes, I think one question I have is in terms of the limits of where we can, where we actually do work. And that's just, that's a question of where, are we, can we do work most off-site?
You can certainly suggest that.
Right. Because sometime, again, earlier you can catch something, not be often going to be. If you like, down a steep hill and build momentum and gather other, you know, runoff, that makes your job much harder.
Okay, question?
I have personal knowledge of this particular site for over twenty years. And David, I have a question for you, one question, and it's pretty simple. Given that this space had numerous original hundred-foot trees, how would this add to the drainage requirements? Because there were never any wetlands there, there were never any water flows or anything there.
I think the question is, just if I may, the concern whether this area has been secretly clearly clear cut beyond the area of close construction and the removal of vegetation beyond the area of close construction. In your opinion, would that contribute, not contribute, help the drainage issues outside?
Clearing never helps hydrologically. What you look at when you do these calculations, and we did calculations for this, there is a curve number or a runoff percentage for wooded areas, and there's a higher runoff number for grass areas. When you run all these numbers and their time-spatial relationships, the idea is to make the peak runoff no different than what exists today. So, you can calculate those differences. If there weren't as many trees, it would change that calculation. As I said, when we did it, and we counted presuming all of this area up here that wasn't supposed to be clear cut, is grass instead of trees. As I said, that the number of, and it's kind of a fictitious flow point, because it doesn't all come to one point, where you take all your models and you put them into one point so you can add them up. The net flow off the site for about up to the seventy-five-year storm was balancing. When you get up to the hundred-year storm, it was showing an increase in flow. This really wasn't completely in the equation yet, I didn't know that was there. So, there's some refinements that got to be made, and that's when you start playing with all these other factors. That's going to be Fred's job to see what the number comes out.
Well, we're going to deal with the site as it is. I've been, if it's been clear cut, it's been clear cut. We're going to deal with it, and then we're going to, there's going to be a landscape plan, and it's going to be, it's going to be, there's going to be a lot of planting that goes on. And that's, I guess, the question. Does the fact that there's going to be a lot of planting occurring on the site, do you need to know what it is?
We don't need to know what it is, no.
Just the nature of what it is.
Yeah, I mean, I think the calculation wants to be conservative in that sense, which would be a grass-type surface.
Mainly grass areas, but they'll be-
Well, there are going to be a lot of wooded areas. In other words, they, what's been cut and hasn't been cut is going to be planted with trees.
The more trees, the better. They obviously take up, take up water and make things better. One thing I will say, and we agree on this, bare soil is about the worst hydrologic runoff condition you can have, and that's mostly what the site is, so we saw it at its worst.
So, one of the things that we were going to talk about is that landscape plan, and my thought would be that the landscape architect would need to know how much regrading you may propose, and also the area and size of rain gardens, and before really going to task on that, would you agree?
Yeah, well, basically, if we cite a rain garden, an area, and we kind of approve that that they'll go in there, then the landscape architect is going to get the plantings that are going in the rain garden, you know, and put that over.
You're going to size it and tell the depth of it, and then the landscape architect would take it?
They're pretty much standard, you know, in terms of how they're created.
But like, where it's showing at three and then down, like maybe there's three of them there, you would come up with how much area that would be for, right, how big, okay? So.
And you would, and if there are grade changes, that would be-
Plan, so landscape architect, this is now going to be flat, whereas the hill before, vice versa. Be able to do that.
Well, we are, as I say, we're eager to get on with it. And I think everyone's eager to get on with it.
So, the next question is, how quickly will you be doing your analysis and have a plan?
Particularly for the interceptor, groundwater interceptor drain, we'll be doing that very quickly. We're just going to check, do some survey, get some grades, make sure where we're at. So, up the slope, so we know where to put it and how deep it's going to be. And then, we're told, as soon as the ground stabilizes, what's happened right now, and we can all attest to that, being out there yesterday, is that we had the ground frozen, you know, pretty deep into the soil, and then we've got some warm weather with some rain, so it thaws out to a few inches, but underneath that's pretty, still pretty solid. We have to wait until that really warms up, you know, so we can work with that. Because if you start excavating or doing a thing and pull a big chunk of frozen soil out, now you're going to open up a whole big area. So, we have to kind of wait for that to occur. But we can go with a plan and, you know, toss around, get the ideas out there, and as soon as we can physically do the work, that we would do that. One thing we'll try to do as soon as we can, as soon as physically possible, is to find out where the water is leaking out right now and running down the slope at the end of the lease field. So, we think something's broken on the pipe or separated or something like that, or joint maybe washed down something, and then it's tipped down, so.
Now, last time, I think we talked about what could be done on a temporary measure because of what you just said, and I think hay bales were one thing.
Right, that's one thing I've talked to the site contractor, I've talked to Larry, about taking the areas, which is off the side of the road, has-
It's that little green button, if the battery holds.
That on the side, water is running down the slope, the edge of the roadway, and it's eroding off the side of the road and runs gravel off there with, you know, stones and fine material, and it's running down, it's filling the back. So, right now, we've got catch basins at the bottom of the hill, there's standing water over there, because we've got filter fabric in it, because otherwise, all this would be ending up in the system, in our storm scepter, and out into the infiltrators. And we don't want that to happen. But the best thing to do is to get all this material back in the hole, where it's eroded away. We have to put some more material, then we do that. And then we put hay bales along the side, so it keeps the runoff that's on this road in the road.
What about-
The curbing will, the curbing will do that eventually, when they put curbing in, they'll keep it in the road. Right now, we have the hay bales on the side of the road and direct the water towards the, towards the catch basin. So, it's going to be clear water, clean water, it's not going to erode off the side, that's going to go in there. And we may need some other up on the side here where maybe we're topping the roadway, where the wall is.
So, there's nothing to prevent that from happening tomorrow?
Right, that's, I recommend it happen, you know, before, before we get the next storm.
Draw a chair up on the other side of the table there.
Thank you.
Yes. If I can't see the chair, I think one other issue, I'm not a drainage expert, although I'm quickly becoming a poor person's drainage expert. Would you agree, we're through the chair, that the filter fabric over the catch basins, based upon the sediment and runoff that's coming off, what you, what was just described, is becoming clogged? So, the wa, that's why when you look at these catch basins, if you can imagine, it's a square grate with little squares in it where water's supposed to filter through. Underneath the grate is a layer of filter fabric. So, what I have observed on site, and I think what Mr. Geisel was describing, is when the water flows down that roadway and catches all this silt and sediment, it washes all that on top of the catch basin. And that's why when you look at the catch basin in a rain event, and me and my drainage expert, we looked at it, it's just a big puddle, you can't even see the catch basin, it's because the filter fabric is clogged up. Would you agree, through the chair? So, the issue is, it's, it can't work unless the contractor on site is regularly sending his people out to have a maintenance program to clean out the filter fabric, which is, to me, drainage 101, if, right, and no one's doing that. So, you have these catch basins which can't work because, you know, a five-minute fix would be to send a laborer to just every week clean it out. So, we would ask that any maintenance, temporary maintenance program with the hay bales and stuff like that also include a directive that you must send someone out at whatever intervals that you two recommend to check the catch basins to see if the filter fabric is not clogged with debris.
Right.
Do you think that would be-
It needs to be done after any significant rainstorm.
Right.
It doesn't have to be done, you know, next Tuesday, if we don't have any rain between now and next Tuesday. But it has to be done, and that should be done, you're absolutely correct.
Yeah, and I don't think it ever has been done.
It's never been done.
Okay, but it should be done.
As part of the temporary means before the grand plan.
I mean, you agree it should be done?
This is actually part of the SWP program, calls for that. Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, calls for that to be done.
How do you pronounce it, SWP?
What's that?
SWP?
SWP?
SWP.
SWP. Storm Water P P P, yeah.
Prevention Program, S W P P P.
All right, well, in any event, it should be done, so.
So, we can start doing that.
Come on up and draw up a chair.
Every time we go on site, we're getting abused mentally and physically by Mr. Sherman. Every time. And we don't want to go back there until we get protection from this, from this guy. And I, and my guys, my guys-
Don't, well, just don't talk to them.
We have videos, we have police reports from the police, how many times they've been up there.
All right.
All the time.
My suggestion is that, Scott, you've not talked to them.
I have, I have counsel.
And you don't, you don't hang over the fence and, I mean, get another observer in there.
Every time we go do something up there, this guy is out roaring and shouting, abusing my guys, abusing the paving crew, he actually hit one of the paving.
Look, I, I-
It's slander. No, please, sir, if you continue to go this way, we're going to, this is going to be something that we will have to resolve in court, sir.
It is what it is, but you're the one who's doing it, not me.
No, you're the one who's bad-mouthing, you have no police-
Okay, that, that, let's, let's-
Yes, we do.
We don't want you people talking to each other.
Can you tell him that? I don't want to talk to him, I don't even want to see him.
Okay, don't talk to him.
I don't even want to see him.
We, we want to get this project done, and, and, and we really want to get this project done. And we, we don't want to have this sort of, we can't go on site because, we want the contractor to be able to get on site and do the work. And that's what the condo association wants, and there's clearly a lot of bad blood here, but let's, we've got to get over it, yeah.
And just for the record, David Udi, I'm the lawyer for the condo association. The condo association is in litigation with this developer on other issues, and he has counsel. And we, Mr. Nevin and others like him have made these similar complaints, which we don't agree with, but each side can have their complaints. And we've agreed that if there's ever an issue on site, that Mr. Nevin, Mr. McKenna, whoever, can call the counsel that represents them in that, with these issues. He and I get along very well, me and this attorney. He can call me and say, David, there's an issue on site, your client is doing something, or my client told me this, and we can work it out and figure it out that way. So, this protocol, this, excuse me, sir, this protocol was set up months and months and months and months ago. The developers' trucks are on site, they've been on site these past few weeks doing work, there haven't been any incidences. So, there's nothing in my mind that would prevent someone from cleaning out filter fabric. And if there's ever an issue, I've been told, I've told my brother counsel, have your, you know, have your client tell you, give me a call immediately in the office, here's my cell phone number, here's my email, I check my email all day.
All right, and your, your client, if he has an issue-
Tells me.
Should tell you.
That's what's happening.
And not tell the contractor.
Correct.
Tell you, and you will-
Correct.
Handle that.
Correct, and that's a two-way street, that's exactly how we set it up. So, there have not been any issues since that agreement was, was brokered, and there's no reason why filter fabric can't be cleaned out, and everyone can-
Well, no, I mean, we want, we want this to be universal.
Agreed.
Okay, so, he's your man, Scott?
I have a cell phone, he is mine.
One thing, when I was going out there yesterday, I'm trying to, you know, the gates were closed, and I could do-
The gates on Brush Hill Road are closed. The ones on Smith Road have been broken.
Broken, right, but it was wide, it was closed yesterday, when I showed up on site. What's that?
You must be confusing with Brush Hill.
No, it was on, on Smith Road. It was, absolutely. I came down there, and I drove around, I said, I can't find my, I can't get my way in here. It was, it was closed. When I left, it was wide open, but it was, it was closed. So, I didn't want to, didn't want to ram the gate or anything like that to get in there, but it was closed.
The gate that was closed on Brush Hill Road has a weight, so if you, any vehicle pulls towards it, it will swing open. So, I'm surprised that-
On Smith Road? On Smith Road?
On Smith Road it's wide open.
It was closed, it was absolutely closed.
All right.
Yeah, I just don't...
We want, we want...
Can I...
We want there to be access.
Okay, that's all right, make sure we have access, so that would be...
Yes, Danny.
Can I just mention, when I ran for office, I walked every neighborhood, and when I got to this neighborhood, I learned that you have to have an appointment to get into this neighborhood. It's a gated community, it just is. So, I actually had to go back on a couple of occasions and wait for somebody that I knew who would welcome me in. So, Mr. Udi has brought this up at other meetings, that if they're contacted, they will let you in, but you, it's not just you.
No, no, I...
It's...
Again, I don't know why, because David had been in there, and Larry was down there, and they had all come in, and I was, you know, a few minutes late because I got held up with this horrendous rainstorm. And I got there, and I called, I said, I can't get in, the gates are all closed.
Right.
You know, the one on Brushell, that's, I never even tried it in there, but off of Smith Road, I've always come in that way.
This came up before, because this came up at a prior meeting where it was presented as if they weren't being allowed on the property, but you have to have an appointment.
Right, but who does he call to get on?
The condo association, I guess, Mr. Udi.
You call David.
Fred, after this meeting, I'll give you my contact.
Okay, great, okay, yeah.
All right, I...
And you had a problem before, Bill.
Look, I think that this is a plan, let's, and we want this thing to happen.
Problem?
And Mr. Clark is going to hound you. Aren't you, Bill?
Yes.
Yeah, he says he is.
Can I just say one last thing to the chair? This is not to cast aspersions on anyone or blame anyone, or, you know, I don't know, that's not productive at this point. We have, my client has a very low level of confidence without this peer review process that the planning board has graciously instituted, of this getting done correctly. I'll just give my layperson's opinion from reading your prior reports, but my read of these reports are, the system wasn't designed properly, and then it wasn't built according to the improper design, so it's double bad. We appreciate this presentation, but for it to work, there has to, the peer review process has to stick to the bitter end. And so, the first phase is identifying what's wrong with it, okay? The second phase is peer viewing the plan, and the third is peer viewing it's actually built according to the plan, because we have a very low level of confidence based on what we've seen so far with any of this stuff, that any representations to the town are accurate, because the plan was no good here according to the peer review and my read of his report, and the construction was not proper either. So, this goes for all this stuff. So, I would implore the planning board to stick with this peer review process. I think if you see it to the bitter end, to when, you know, through as built and actual observations on site, then this can get worked out properly. Thank you.
Yes.
What is our, what are we doing for interim step? I mean, I know we have a good plan, we're working on a plan here for fixing the problem.
The interim steps have to be suggested by the engineer.
Okay, so...
And once they're suggested, Fred, we expect them to be implemented.
So, when will that happen? Because we're coming up on rainy season here. I'm hearing clean the filtration fabric, I'm hearing hay bales along the road. I'd like to see some hay bales to protect the downhill on Truman Parkway, again, where the complaint originated. So, making sure that whatever's happening to push that water, wherever that water's jumping, to try to at least slow it down. So, this is down on the...
Up there, on the upper left.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but I guess the question I have is, when will the recommendations be made, and then subsequently, when does the work happen?
Fred says that he's going to, I mean...
Temporary, I'm just talking about temporary right now, just to get something in place for the spring.
I think the board wants it done within the week, the hay bales within the week.
Right.
The fabric cleaned, we want the fabric cleaned.
And the fabric cleaned within the week, that's not...
That's great.
That's not, that's what we expect.
And after every rainstorm.
And after every rainstorm, we want the fabrics of...
But the quantity and location of the hay bales should be at the recommendation.
Right, right, but you can, you know where the hay bales should be.
But I'm just suggesting that the contractor and the developer get their direction.
Okay, if I can go out there, you've got the supply of hay bales, I can direct them where they should be placed.
Right, thank you. And we'd love Mr. Crispin to bless that.
Well, we think the hay bales, I think Fred can place the hay bales.
Okay.
You can stop by and check.
Right.
There is a product called a silt sack, which goes in catch basins. I think it's just filter fabric under the grate that's out there. Silt sack actually goes, hangs down in there.
You just pull it out and, like a vacuuming cleaner bag.
It gives a much bigger...
A bigger area to walk in and then collect the silt inside there. Actually, it can get pretty heavy filled with sand and silt.
Might be a good option to keep the water.
Right, okay.
Mr. Crispin, I know the ground is frozen, but is there an interim measure? You know, I'm concerned about, you know, going downhill to the budding neighbors. Is there even just a shallow hole or something that could be done to kind of catch it before it goes downhill onto the neighbors? I mean, I know the hay bales are supposed to help, but I'm concerned with the quantity of water when that ice does melt.
Right, yeah, right now, that's pre-existing beforehand. We can do something with hay bales to direct it, so it gets more of it into our system.
But can't you get some into that catch basin over there where that circle is?
We'll try to see if we can do that, we can stack up the hay bales to direct it around.
I think the flow, I think the flow was pre-existing, but to be fair, certainly the vegetation has changed, the house is now there, so it has certainly been increased.
And the system was supposed to be in place long ago.
I think, I think that until we get the water out of this, if we take water from here and dump it from down here, it's going to make it multiply the effect here. It's almost better in my mind to have lesser impacts at both ends than one bad impact at one end.
But that particular neighbor has had, been in here quite a bit and has had a lot of damage on the property from that water.
Worried about the trees on her property too, because that water level is going up and up and up.
I'm not sure, I mean, you have more land area here, I don't know how much of it is getting down and having that same kind of damage, I guess, is the...
The flow that I saw the other day goes right down and along that fence, and it's going underneath. And there is a...
Home near too, I'm sure.
Fiber roll erosion right along there that acts as a dam almost, keeps the water on this side of the fence to some degree. I'm sure it leaks through.
All right, I think that that's...
Well, are there any other interim measures that you can think of besides the hay bales and the cleaning of the fabric?
Not really. Unfortunately, being the frozen season, and this being full of water due to groundwater, it's...
Would gravel help in any location?
It's pretty gravelly out there right now, there's a lot of stone exposed and gravel, and...
What would the first thing that you would suggest be done as soon as the ice melts? What would be the first?
De-water the system.
Right, to get that in place, take the water around.
I mean, initially, they could do something, if they can get in here, we talked out in the hall about maybe taking this basin that was designed and maybe moving it up in this location, something for Fred to kind of detail, but that could probably be done short term, and that would solve water from way up the hill and down and, you know, slow it down before it gets out there.
Fairly quickly, then we can have it overflow from that tied into the catch basin. Right now, it's not taking, catch basins up the top of the hill aren't taking very much flow, but we really need to get the interceptor drained, and that's something we all agree on.
And are you thinking, are you thinking that that's an April soil condition kind of timeframe?
You know, I don't want to make predictions of the weather, but we'll do that as soon as we possibly can do it. I think that's the idea, let's get in there. If we can get in there to catch the April rains and the runoff, you know, the groundwater, then I think we'll be in better shape, in better shape.
So, do we need a commitment, maybe a written commitment from the developer? And also from the association?
I, I, you know, for hay bales and...
Well, no, no, for the, that, if we're going to get a plan that says this is what's going to correct this, and it really should be done as soon as the soil conditions allow, preferably before April heavy rains, then if, what if it doesn't happen then? I mean, what if the plan's there and everybody says, yes, they're going to do it, but then it doesn't get done and we still have more? I'm just wondering, how do we hold, you know...
I don't know, we can ask, asking for the sort of legal commitment to these agreements, it seems to me, is complicates matters. We want to get this done in a reasonable way, and I think the developer understands that. And if, you know, if there is, if we don't have good faith, and the developer says, I never want to sell these things, so I'm not going to do anything, I mean, if that's his intention, why would he sign, why would he sign it to begin with? I mean, he wants to, it just seems to me an undue complication asking the developer to make, sign an agreement with the town that he'll do certain things. We don't even have the things that he's... Once we have Fred's plan...
Okay.
And if, you know, if these temporary measures haven't been taken promptly, we'll have a good reason to say that, you know, we expected you to get this done, you didn't do it, we want something more this time around.
So, would the plan then become part of an amendment to the special permit?
Yes.
And at what point do we make that happen?
We can do that after Fred does the plan.
Okay. Then that's something that's enforceable, right, okay, that's fine.
Okay, so...
And the plan theoretically could be done well before April.
Oh, well, it will be.
Oh, it should be, yeah, it should be ready to go.
Even if we have to have them come back again for landscaping.
So, let's, let's, let's try and, let's try and work together on this, folks, because it's hard enough. It's going to be hard enough. And David, thank you very much for your good work, and we look forward to a lot more of it, not a lot more of it, some more of it.
Quick resolution.
Yes, yes, a quick and successful resolution. So, we're going to continue this hearing to the 22nd.
The 22nd, all right, will I give you time to come back?
Yeah, oh, that's...
All right, what time, Lauren?
The 22nd, we will have the public hearing for the scenic roads application.
Oh, what?
This is the public hearing for the scenic roads application.
I tell you, we're going to do, oh, we're going to do the site work before we, we're going to have done the site work so we can really do the hearing then. But that's not going to take very long, I don't think.
So, 7:30?
Yeah, 7:30, okay, 7:30.
No moves.
All right, all in favor? All right. Thanks for, everyone for coming in, and very interesting stuff.
Thank you.
Too bad we had to learn about it.
Seeing it in the rain was worth a great deal.
That ice was...
I mean, it's such a...
I'm happy to go, ma'am.
Go on your own.
Can you just send us the date like you did the last time?
You're going to send an email saying where on Harland Street they should go and the plan, electronic plan, and maybe we'll put up a flag just in the bank where the cut would be.
Okay.
All right. The best laid plans don't always work.
That's right.
But welcome and introduce yourself and tell us about parking at the Fruit Center.
Michael Modestino, I represent the trustees of the McNosa Family Trust. You know, we've looked at it, we feel that the parking stack is the right way to go. We've done some revisions to the landscaping plan. I think I sent a revision to Lauren today. I think it would give more trees on both sides. I think we heard from a couple neighbors on the Antwerp Street side before, I think it was Ms. Devon and Mr. Clancy, and they felt that they needed some screening on their side. So, the new plan would encompass that, and I think it would work. I went over to the Mass General to look at the stackers that are over there. I don't know if anybody else did. I saw them in operation, it looked reasonable to me, didn't seem like a lot of noise was emanating from them, nothing unreasonable. But we have an obstacle, as the chairman knows. I had felt from the beginning that this should have gone before the Board of Appeals, and the building commissioner felt otherwise, and that's why I'm here. So, I think at this point, I'm going to have to go before the Board of Appeals, and I'm going to have to ask that this be continued perhaps for, I don't know, maybe 60 days before, so that we can get in there, bless you.
Thank you.
So that we can get in there and have that hearing held.
We will continue it for, say, 60 days, but if the Board of Appeals, obviously, town council has weighed in on this and has said that these are structures and you need a variance, or at least you need a determination by the Board of Appeals that they're within the purview of some existing variance.
Yes.
But, so you'll file for a variance, and then if the Board of Appeals says, well, we'd sort of like to know what the planning board thinks about this. If the Board of Appeals were to ask us, we could weigh in. And not, we've done it before, before the actual variance is granted, we've indicated to the Board of Appeals what our view of the project is, but I don't think that in this case where there's no variance, been application on file, that if we were to tell the Board of Appeals, this is what we think, I don't think that would be a sound procedure.
I agree.
So, in that case, I mean, does it make sense to withdraw without prejudice or just to continue?
He's paid the dough.
Fair enough, fair enough.
And let's just continue it for 60 days.
But if Board of Appeals sends them back here for an opinion, I don't want to have them have to wait around till the end of the 60-day period.
Well, no, 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 I mean, if you want a hearing before then, I mean, the 60 days is, we'll move it up.
Fine.
It's just continue it to some time.
Fine, as long as we can move it forward.
And then if you need more time, we'll move it up, and if you...
I'll get the application in right away, so we'll try to get a quick hearing.
And if they say, why don't you race off the planning board and get their views, then we'll do it.
Sure, makes sense.
Okay, well, I'm sorry to, it was only an hour we made you wait. We sometimes, we sometimes make people wait.
Hopefully you learned some stuff about water.
Well, I know Dave Crispin from other matters that I've dealt with before, it's always good to listen to him.
All right, well, thanks for coming in. We'll have a, what's a good date to continue it to, Lauren? Do we have a meeting in March or April, or what is 60 days?
I guess, end of March. March, end of March.
End of March.
So, 8th, 22nd?
The first meeting in March is March 8th.
The second meeting in March is?
22nd.
Yes.
22nd, let's do it.
That's fine.
On the 22nd.
Thank you.
And we'll put you at 7:00, 7:15.
7:15.
Yeah. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
Now, folks, it's 9:30. Lauren, what else do we have that you would like? You get the choice now. Would you like to discuss something?
Cheryl did ask for an update on the stormwater regulations. I did reach out to the environmental coordinator. I'll read the email from her, she explains... I'll read the email from her, she explains it best. At this point, it looks like any new bylaw or regulation change would be on the docket at October's special town meeting. We are waiting for a model version from the Nippon River Watershed Association. It's looking like we anticipate having this model bylaw sometime between March and April, planning to bring it to the boards between then and June, when they will be able to make comments and changes before we give a draft to the Board of Selectment around July. So her plan is that they'd like to come before the planning board, once this is ready and solicit your input. In the terms of planning itself, the NIPD's permit does not make too many huge tasks for planning, it does encourage permitees to consider low-intensity development provisions within its bylaws, so as Cheryl mentioned, things like rain gardens, and we can discuss that with her at that time.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
And as other things that we've been dealing with, um...
You, you don't have to, this is, this is...
I can give you, we, Bill mentioned the Walker case, it's been taking a significant amount of time that we've been working on, working with the attorneys gathering stuff like that. Polte is working for the closing of the town farm sites, that's also required a lot of time on our end. We've been dealing with 333 Brushell Road, as well as Cheryl mentioned earlier, while speaking with the Master Plan Implementation Committee, that we've been working with the Historic Commission to talk about the possibility of creating historic districts. So Bill did attend a, one of the MIPC committee meetings that had a presentation about historic